Ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to call the Township of Ocean Planning Board to order. We have a roll call, please.
Here.
Dr. Di Benedetto?
Here.
Mr. Di Filia?
Here.
Mr. Murphy?
Mr. Fisher?
Here.
Mr. Blue?
Ms. Close?
Here.
Mr. Levy?
Mr. Seattle?
Here.
Mr. Winesfield?
Here.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Dr. Di Filia?
Yes.
Ms. Close?
Yes.
Mr. Seattle?
Yes.
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 Next, we have minutes for approval, July 22, 2019, which was a regular meeting. Would somebody please make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Mr. Murphy?
Yes.
Dr. Di Benedetto?
Yes.
Mr. Di Filia?
Yes.
Ms. Close?
Yes.
Mr. Seattle?
Yes.
Mr. Winesfield?
Yes.
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 Yes. Next, we have case one, Mamanno, Block 33.14, Lot 2, 710 West Park Avenue, Ocean. That case has been carried to October 28, 2019. On case two, which is Scott Delaney, Block 35, Lot 5, 1206 West Park Avenue in Ocean, that case has also been carried to October 28, 2019. We have a continued case, which is case number three, Deal 35 Land LLC, Block 33, Lot 19.01, 1603 State Highway 35, Ocean, New Jersey, Zone C-7. That will be deferred to a special meeting of October 9th, excuse me, October 7th, October 7th, and that meeting will start, I believe, at 7:00 PM, correct? And that will be at the Ocean Township High School Auditorium. Ms. Krimko?
Good evening, Jennifer Krimko, on behalf of that applicant. Yes, it's my understanding that it will be at 7:00 AM, there will be no further...
AM?
Yeah. 7:30 PM, there will be no further notice.
Seven, hold it, seven?
Seven o'clock PM.
Okay.
There will be no further notice, and the applicant consents to extend the time with which to render a decision through that October 7, 2019 date, and we would sign the waiver.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, the first new case for this evening, then, would be case number four, Sunset Arcadia Center Incorporated, Block 187, Lots 1.02 and 5, 1100 Highway 35, Ocean Zone, Ocean, New Jersey, Zone C-3. The attorney for the applicant is Mr. Peter S. Falvo, Jr.
John.
Pardon?
Yeah, we need to swear in a new member first.
Don't worry, David. Thank you.
Right. Just stand and read your...
Sure, you got it.
Yep, and then give it to me.
I, David Fisher, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey, that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same and to the government established in the United States and this state under the authority of the people. I do further solemnly swear that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly perform all of the duties of the position of member, Class III of the Planning Board for the Township of Ocean according to the best of my ability, so help me God.
Thank you. Sign and then just pass it down.
Yeah.
Welcome.
Thanks on Dave.
Okay, Mr. Falvo, you can proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. This is a sign application. I believe the board has a package to be introduced. You have your reports?
Yeah.
It's dated September 22. The applicant proposes to increase the area of two freestanding signs on the Ocean Plaza site by adding signage below the existing signs. The setbacks, heights, and widths of the two signs will not be changed. More specifically, sign number one, located on Sunset Avenue, frontage of Ocean Plaza, will be increased from 132 square feet to 216 square feet, an increase of 84 square feet. Sign number two, located on Route 35 South immediately before the exit ramp and after the entrance drive to Ocean Plaza, will be increased from 158 square feet to 240 square feet, an increase of 82 square feet. Freestanding sign area, the ordinance permits a corner lot to have two freestanding signs, one on each street frontage. The area of each sign can be no more than the area of a single permitted sign on the property, or 75 square feet in this instance. The ordinance does not differentiate between single-use sites and shopping centers. Variances were previously granted for the two existing signs with regard to sign area and sign setback. The applicant requested and was granted a technical review meeting to discuss the application and the reasons for the variance request. It was discussed at that meeting that the existing sign area is not sufficient to display the number of separate businesses that may occupy the shopping center. It should be noted that this is a problem that has been, that has repeatedly been raised with this and other shopping centers in the township, and that variances for sign area have been granted as a result. Signs at both Middlebrook Shopping Center and Cobblestone Village have been granted such variances. Similar variances have also been granted to Seaview Square, where the two large freestanding signs exceed 500 square feet in area. It was recommended to the applicant that a zoning request be submitted that would recommend increasing the permitted area of the, of the permitted sign area for shopping centers. That request has been submitted, and the requested sign areas are consistent with that request. The zoning amendment is currently under review, and it is anticipated that a recommendation will be made to the governing body to revise the ordinance accordingly, particularly as it, as it applies to this shopping center and Middlebrook Shopping Center. Whether or not it would include Cobblestone Village is not certain at this time. It is intended that the maximum permitted area of the signage will be rated to, related to the sign, the area and frontage of the sites, and that a maximum permitted sign area would be 250 square feet. It appears that the applicant does not want to wait for the ordinance to be amended, which can take significant time, and wants to proceed with the application as presented. Given the fact that the applicant is not changing the height, width, or setbacks of the subject signs, and that the intent is to provide identification signage on the freestanding sign that is readily visible from the subject roads, I have no significant concerns with this request.
Mr. Falvo, we do have one bit of housekeeping we should have done first. I understand that one of the, the entities that had to be noticed was Verizon.
Right.
But because of a typo, their notice came back to you.
Right.
And now you're resending it out.
Correct.
So, we're not going to do a vote tonight, we're going to hold over to the next meeting.
Correct.
So, they have proper notice, and of course, you know, if they were to object and say, "I want to hear the whole application," you'd have to start again.
Absolutely.
So, you still want to go forward with your application. All right, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I have a very brief report.
You're right ahead.
This is dated September 21, and normally I defer review of signage and adequate signage to the Township Planner. Having said that, my engineering recommendation is that if approved by the board, any old and new modified illuminated signage should have a maximum illumination level of 200 nits, which, for reference purposes, is the same thing that we restrict digital billboards to on the highway, so it's not, not dark by any stretch.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, expedite things. Maybe we can mark some items as evidence. A1 in evidence would be the minor site plan for Ocean Plaza, signage modification prepared by Insight Engineering, Eric Ballou, professional engineer, dated February 25, 2019, revised through September 11, 2019, consisting of two sheets. A2 would be a master site plan prepared by Langen Engineering, consisting of sheet number 20.00, dated March 30, 2006, signed by Michael A. Semirano, Jr., engineer. A3 would be an aerial exhibit of Ocean Plaza signage modification, and that was prepared by Insight. A4 is the signage detail. A5 is allied signage, which is the sign company, is their detail. And what I've done is, with regard to A3, and A3, 4, and 5, there are handouts of those, so the work that happened before them. At this point, I'd like to call Mr. Gallo Vialanga. You can test me either there or up there, however. Mr. Swearman?
If you can, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, to help you God? I do.
Mr. Vialanga, what is your position with Sunset Arcadia, or with the entity?
I am the president of Stavola Realty Company, and we are the owners, managers, and developers of that property.
With regard to the present application, could you give the board just an overview of why you're applying for the signed variance, and why it's needed, given the circumstances, the economy of the market, and everything else?
Sure. The, the initial need for the increased size of the signs started when we lost Trap Aquarium in 8,000-square-foot tenant that was a long-term tenant. They were in place when we developed the shopping center in, I think we built it around 2003 or '04. At that time, that particular tenant had no signage on either one of the pylons. When they left, we split that store into four stores. One was 4,000 square feet, Rockstar Nails. The other was European Wax Center, and they're occupying 2,000 square feet. We have another empty store there that is 2,000 square feet. We anticipate leasing shortly. All three of those particular tenants have no signage on the highway. Fast forward, it appears that we're going to have some vacancies coming up with some of the other larger tenants, and we're anticipating is, again, splitting some of those spaces up, at which point we're going to need to provide some pylon sign for those tenants occupying that space.
And this loss of the larger tenants is a side of a shift in the retail market?
It is. The, the sizes of some of the stores that we have over there in today's world are not the same as they were when we developed the property. The Stein Mart space is 30,000 square feet. We're not sure if they're going to renew the lease. We've been marketing it to tenants that could occupy as small as 4,000 square feet, as much as some of the folks we're talking to now about 13,000 or 14,000 square feet. Pier 1 appears not to be renewing the lease, and that space is 12,400 square feet. It splits up pretty nicely into two stores, 6,000 and 4,000 square feet, or 4,400 square feet. But, you know, the, the leasing of this space is really somewhat a moving target. We have to anticipate the need for additional signage, and the signs that we have now are kind of small, so we know we have three that we want to put up there, and it's, it's very likely that those two stores could be split anywhere from, you know, to as many as nine tenants, but maybe as few as, you know, three if we're lucky.
I have no further questions of Mr. Vialanga unless any members of the board do. We have an inaugural testimony.
Is, are you, is there an obligation you have to provide signage for the tenants? Is that part of...
In the two leases that we signed, we did, we did agree to make an effort to get them on the pylon and make this application, yes.
Okay.
It's a lease obligation.
Exactly, right, okay.
So, what could this go up to? How many unit, different retail?
Well, we designed it to show you what it would look like if, I couldn't foresee having any more than these tenants. Some of these panels are very small, so if we had less tenants there, those would be increased, you know, proportionately, and we would, in our leases, have the ability to have them downsize, or, or, you know, those are just divider bars in panels. So, those particular panels that you see are really just showing you what it would look like if, if it was, you know, used to, to show all those tenants. We would love to have a bigger sign. We didn't want to, we didn't think it made sense to take that whole pylon down and come in for a bigger application, so we used the existing signage that we had now, the height, so we basically built on below the panel.
On a couple of these different images that you showed us here, you have Wegmans up top, and the other side you have Staples. Are you going to be modifying that, or? I didn't know Wegmans was part of that. I thought it was, I didn't know that was...
The Wegmans, the Wegmans sign, which I, which I'm, is sign one, that's on Sunset, and that, that's not going to change. And on, on the other sign on Route 35, Wegmans is not on there. They have their own pylon sign in front of their store.
I didn't know Wegmans was part of it, too.
It was, yeah, it's all one, one shopping center. At the time, it was two lots, I think it's one lot now. Might be two lots. Two lots.
I have a question, sir. Is Verizon part of the shopping center?
Verizon, yes, that's part of our shopping center. Was that where the notice failed?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
No, no. You don't serve Verizon there, you serve them out there.
They're tenants of ours. I thought, I thought maybe it was a failure to the utility.
Wait, it sounded almost like they had their own property that they...
You know, it, I think at one point, it was, when it was Pizza Hut, it may have been one, it was one sign. I believe we consolidated that job.
I, I am not 100% sure. It's shown as a separate tax lot, but that doesn't necessarily mean it's not an integral part of the shopping center, because a shopping center can be more than one tax lot.
Okay.
I don't believe, Gary, you were ever required as part of the approvals process for the site plan to consolidate that into one big property.
Yeah, we actually, we actually own that property, too, if that helps with the notice problem.
No, no.
Well, we won't be objecting.
The irony, Mr. Seattle, is the reason it came back, they must have had a new postman on the route. The word Boulevard was miss, misspelled. The, the numerical address was correct, the municipality was correct, everything else correct. But the irony is when we called the clerk's office, the tax assessor, and the building department, and Wal Township asked him, "Where was this building on Bellmar Boulevard?" Nobody had an indication of where it was. So, we're assuming it's just a mail drop, but because the word Boulevard was misspelled...
Well, it's good to know that that's part of your property, so.
It is.
We'll have to do this twice, then.
But, yeah, I think we'll be okay.
Okay. Anybody else? I'll call Mr. Ballou.
Thank you.
Peter, where should I stand? Should I stand?
Wherever you want. You can stand up if you want. There's the mic.
Excuse me, Mr. Falvo. Before Mr. Ballou testifies, I'd like to ask if there's anyone in the audience that would like to question the first witness regarding his testimony? No? Well, if that's the case, then, Mr. Ballou.
Thank you.
Qualifications.
First, raise your hand. Testimony, you're about looking at, is the truth and the whole truth to help you God?
I do. So, Eric Ballou, I serve as a partner at Insight Engineering in Wall, New Jersey. I haven't had the pleasure to testify in front of this board, but I have testified in front of numerous boards across the state, notable projects in Long Branch, Pier Village, Beachfront North, so I've had some commercial experience along the way in my, my 20 years. I am currently licensed in the state of New Jersey as well for a professional engineer.
Accept his credentials?
Will accept them.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Mr. Ballou, referring to, I guess what we, I've marked that.
So, I believe this exhibit that I have up here, the aerial exhibit, I believe, is A3?
It is.
A3. A3. So, what you have right now is exhibit A3, showing the two different sign locations, but I think everyone knows this. So, we have Stein Mart is here, Wegmans is a little bit further to the north, Staples on the corner. So, sign one is located adjacent to Sunset Avenue. That sign actually does actually go past the property line by about six feet or so, and it's existing condition, but the good news is it's still, though, approximately 30 feet off of the curb line on Sunset Avenue. So, when you're out there, it really is set back quite a distance. So, that sign is approximately 23 feet high, and again, as the numbers were spoke before, it is about 132 square feet. What's going to happen with that sign, we talk about, right now it's about 10 feet off of the ground, so what we're going to do is, instead of having the sign be 10 feet off the ground, find the additional sign area we need by building the sign approximately four feet off the ground. So, that's how we're going to actually add the sign distance, is really to go down, not go up. Sign two, that's one that you'll see adjacent to Route 35, where you go, you have the right turn lane right in that area, and again, it's the same situation. That sign exists today as 25 feet, we will maintain that, and that 25-foot sign is 216 square feet, and, I'm sorry, the, the sign is 156 square feet, and we're going up to 240 square feet for sign number two. That one as well is, is set back approximately 10.2 feet, where 15 feet is required, but again, it's set back approximately 20 feet from the curb line, so it is set back appropriately from all of the roadways. And of both the sign locations, even though we're building these signs proposing closer to the ground level when we expand the signs, there's really no site triangles, there's no view corridors or anything like that, that it's actually going to be interfering with. So, we feel by changing the sign in this manner is the most appropriate way to handle the additional sign that's needed. You know, we do have exhibit A4. You know, the reason we, we wanted to give you that is so you could give a direct comparison of what the existing sign is compared to the proposed sign. So, the top portion is existing sign one, showing the detailing, and then right below it is the proposed sign. And what you can tell when you look at these signs is that we're really keeping the same aesthetics, we're keeping the Ocean Plaza name as you see it out there now, the seagull, so those artistic components of these signs will remain in the same for both the existing and the proposed sign that we have.
Just to supplement his testimony, when we went before the technical review meeting, it was originally proposed to eliminate the architectural feature on the top and slim down the other ones to maintain the size better, but Mr. Higgins felt that it would be better and more pleasing to maintain the architectural elements that were on the sign, so that's what we opted to do.
With that said, I think, you know, with the prior testimony provided before, that's all I, I have, unless there's questions. Anything I missed, Peter?
No, you got it all.
How is that going to look with it being on the ground?
Excuse me?
How's that going to look with it being dropped down? Is it going to look okay?
I, I feel it's going to be, I think it's going to be fine. I think it's going to look good. Now, of, of course, well, of course, the tenants that are higher will be better for visibility, it will, but, but sign two has all the manicured lawn right around there, so I think when we lower that sign, I think you're going to have great visibility for that, especially going, you know, southbound on Route 35. This sign, number one, as well, it's actually elevated, so it is above the roadway, so even though we're building it closer to the ground, it's actually still higher than the roadway, so I think you'll have view distance for those as well. The higher the tenants, the better you are, but we feel it will work. There was a question about how many tenants could these proposed signs accommodate. Right now, with the smaller panels, if they were used, you could go up to 15 tenants on these signs.
Just so you're aware, too, the sign at Cobblestone Village is also very low to the ground, and it doesn't look that, that odd or disturbing. I don't like the sign itself, but, but, but the, the location of the sign.
Yeah.
In fact, I was not even aware that it was so low to the ground until I went and looked at it today, again, as, as preparation for this application.
The sign on Sunset Avenue that you're talking about, and you mentioned there is no impact on visibility with cars, because that's such a terrible area as far as trying to get out of that parking lot.
Correct. This sign is still set back about 30 feet off of the roadway, so most of the vehicles, when you make your turning movement, you're within probably five to six feet from the edge of the curb, so the sign's practically, approximately 20 feet behind you when you make those turning movements.
Typically, a site triangle for a driveway is measured at 0.15 feet behind the curb line, so a sign that's, unless you, unless you, beyond a 90-degree intersection, you have to look, you know, way backward or something to 30-foot, but that's not the case here.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Any other members of the board have a question for Mr. Ballou?
No one?
Then I will defer to the, the public. Public have any questions for Mr. Ballou?
Any questions?
You'll have to step up, and you'll have to come to the microphone, and you'll have to give your name and address, if you would. Thank you.
Much better.
Yeah, thank you. No, my question was...
Your name and address, please.
I'm sorry, Marianne Schall, 615 South Edgemere Drive, West Allenhurst.
Thank you.
Hi. The first sign, you said it extends over the property line?
That's correct.
Whose property is it on?
It would be on that public right of way.
The public right of way. Is there an agreement with...
Ah, yes, we, we've negotiated with the Township Committee for an easement for the six feet, but about 18 square feet that it overlaps.
Is the township compensated?
Harvey?
Is the township compensated?
They haven't asked for any money, so we have an offer.
Okay. Of course not. Thank you.
Thank you. Augur?
Holoka Hanu, 26 Meadows Lane. Do you have any plans to trim down the berms to that maybe when you bring the sign down will obstruct the view of the sign?
We're not proposing to change any grading associated with the signs, so whatever grade the, the elevation of the soil is, we're not planning on changing any grades associated with the sign.
I'm talking about the berms. You have some landscaping up there, so if you're lowering the sign...
Can't get that on the record.
...to trim the...
Can you speak?
Since you're lowering the sign, when the public or the vehicles are traveling south, the shrubbery of the berm is going to obstruct the view, are there any plans to trim that, the berm?
Yes, I can respond to that. Yes, there are shrubs associated with sign one. There will definitely have to be some shrubs to be trimmed and maintained to make sure we have that site visibility. So the sign is approximately 20 feet behind you when you make those turning movements.
Typically, a site triangle for a driveway is measured at 0.15 feet behind the curb line. So a sign that's, unless you, unless you, it'd be on a 90-degree intersection. You have to look, you know, way backward or something to 30 foot, but that's not the case here.
Any other questions?
Any other members of the board have a question for Mr. Ballou?
No one?
Then I will defer to the public. Public have any questions for Mr. Ballou? You'll have to step up and you'll have to come to the microphone and you'll have to give your name and address, if you would. Thank you.
Much better.
Thank you. No, my question was...
Your name and address, please.
I'm sorry, Marianne Schall, 615 South Edgemere Drive, West Allenhurst.
Thank you.
The first sign, you said it extends over the property line?
That's correct.
Whose property is it on?
It would be on that public right of way.
The public right of way. Is there an agreement with...
Yes, we've negotiated with the township committee for an easement for the six feet, but about 18 square feet that it overlaps.
Is the township compensated? Is the township compensated?
They haven't asked for any money, so we have an offer.
Of course not. Thank you.
Thank you. Auga?
Holoka Hanu, 26 Meadows Lane. Do you have any plans to trim down the berms to that maybe when you bring the sign down will obstruct the view of the sign?
We're not proposing to change any grading associated with the signs. So whatever grade the elevation of the soil is, we're not planning on changing any grades associated with this sign.
I'm talking about the berms. You have some landscaping up there. So if you're lowering the sign...
Can't get that on the record.
...trim the... Since you're lowering the sign, when the public or the vehicles are traveling south, the shrubbery of the berm is going to obstruct the view. Are there any plans to trim that, the berm?
Yes, I can respond to that. Yes, there are shrubs associated with Sign 1. There will definitely have to be some shrubs to be trimmed and maintained to make sure we have that site visibility. So there will be some landscape maintenance as part of this project.
And so you know the... The lots, there are two lots in that property. Lot 1 and Lot 5 is the same block. Because I was last week in the assessor's office trying to find out how much revenue brings the Wegman Shopping Center to compare to a proposed development. So it's one block, but there are two lots, Lot 1 and Lot 5.
Any other questions from the public? Okay, then we'll close that section.
That's about as far as we can go this evening. We'll be back October 28th.
All right, thank you.
We'll see you October 28th.
Without the requirement of any further notice, right?
Correct.
And to the extent required, we'll extend the time within which the board must render a decision.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to make an announcement, please, on Case Number 5. Ivy Rehab LLC, Block 209, Lot 8, 1111, Highway 35, Ocean Zone C3. That was, will be carried as well. But I don't know...
October 28th.
Till October 28th.
No further notice and you're waiving any...
Yes, I already signed a time waiver.
You did?
Yep.
Thank you. Okay, now we have Case Number 6, PL Realty. Block 12.01, Lot 9, 220, Pinewood Avenue, Ocean, New Jersey, Zone R4. Attorney for the applicant, Jennifer Crimco.
Good evening, members of the board. Nice to see you. It's been a while. As I think Dr. Benedetto said. I'm here tonight for a minor subdivision. We have a lot in the R4 zone at 220 Pinewood. The lot width requirement is 90 feet. This lot is at 192 feet, I think. So it is in excess of the lot requirement by more than two. The applicant is seeking to subdivide it and there's a vacant portion with no improvements on it, proposing to construct a new single-family home on that.
Now, Ms. Crimco, before we go forward, there was one little issue with notice.
Yeah. I don't think it is an issue, actually. There was a misspelling.
Right.
There was two letters transposed on someone's name, but it went to the correct address and everything else was correct.
I agree that unless it were to come back and they objected, then you might have a problem.
I would, but I would think even a judge would agree that that kind of mistake is not an issue that would render the... Because they were served with it, albeit that there are two letters in their name.
Right.
It should have been Orfali and it was Speldorlafi.
Right. Okay, just so it's on the record.
Yes, thank you.
We're all clear. Thank you.
So I guess B1 will be the board packet. Would you like me to move items into evidence before Bill and Jim review their reports or after?
Before is fine.
Okay, so as A1 in evidence, we have the survey of property that's prepared by Nelson Engineering dated 10/18/18. Tell me if I need to slow down any, okay? A2 is the minor subdivision plot, also by Nelson Engineering. That's revised through 4/319. That also is consisting of one sheet. A3 is the plot plan prepared by Nelson Engineering. That is revised 4/319. That's consisting of four sheets. A5 are the architectural plans prepared by JRG Architect. That is dated 4/419. One, two, three, four, five, six. Yeah. Oh. Yeah, I'm sorry, that's A4. I was jumping ahead. A5 is the Drainage System Design Report by Nelson Engineering dated June 4, 2019. A6 is a photo packet consisting of one, two, three, four, five sheets. The front being a snapshot from the NewJerseyTaxMaps.com website of the neighborhood with the lot in red and the remaining lots in the area overlaid with an aerial. And the other three are photos from Google Earth.
Which one was this, A what?
This is A6, correct?
Mm-hmm, the photos, yes.
And then A7 is a color rendering, color rendered sheet one of four from the plot plan which was moved in as A3. So this is A7, right? That's all I have at the moment by way of evidence. Order of ports?
Dated September 20th. The applicant proposes to subdivide an existing 19,200 square foot parcel into two lots of 9,600 square foot each. One lot will contain an existing single-family residence and one will be a vacant building lot. The site is a 19,600 square foot lot with 192 feet of frontage on Pinewood Avenue at a depth of 100 feet. It is occupied by a single-family residence that is located on the eastern half of the lot. The western half of the lot is vacant and wooded. Surrounding land uses, the site is in an area of single-family residences on varying size lots. The subject site is the largest lot in the immediate area of the 200-foot radius of the site. And approximately 40% of the lots in the area have areas equal to or less than the proposed by the applicant. Sites located in the R4 residential zone, proposed use is permitted in the zone. Bulk variances, minimum lot area, the ordinance requires a minimum lot area of 10,000 square feet. The plan proposes lot areas of 9,600 square feet for each lot. Approximately 40% of the lots in the immediate area of the site have areas equal to or less than the proposed lot areas, including four of the six lots directly abutting the site and one of the two lots directly across Pinewood from the site. Minimum front setback, the ordinance requires a minimum front setback of 30 feet and the existing residence on proposed Lot 9.02 has an existing front setback of 24.4 feet. This is an existing condition. The subdivision creates a technical variance for the setback since it is on a new lot. There is no reasonable way to avoid this condition. The balance of my report, there was another set of drawings that were submitted that I did not review. They're either sitting, probably sitting on my desk with the 20 or 25 applications I have to review for the zoning board. So I'm going to just summarize the balance of it. The zoning table is accurate on the plan where they're to propose a front setback on the new lot of 30.5 feet. One side of 10.5 feet. Both sides of 40.5 feet. And rear setback of 30.2 feet. So those are all conforming. With regard to tree location and preservation plan, as I counted the plan, there were 30 trees to be removed and there were four four-inch trees being proposed. In which case, there's an obligation of $9,100, which is 350 times the 26 remaining trees to the shade tree fund. Or if the applicant wants to put additional trees on the site, he could reduce that obligation. As far as the number of trees, the ordinance requires 15 trees per acre for all residential and commercial developments. There are four trees being proposed and I don't know if there are going to be any other trees. Plans don't show any other trees. So the applicant has to address that. As far as the street trees, four are required. And as I look at the plans, four are proposed, so there's no waiver for that.
Mr. Jim, our report dated September 21st. I'll just cut to the quick here because my standard format is what I use, but a lot of it's redundant, unnecessary and plus most of it's been out there since April. Comment 3 on the first page at the bottom is the important thing. We said earlier, a stone mortar runoff mitigation installation is provided on the plan prior to initiation of a complete engineering review and or scheduling of the matter for public hearing. A complete stone mortar management report, including soil permeability testing, design support must be provided. Okay, so that was from April. That information has been provided. If you look above, the Drainage System Design Report was prepared in June. The following must be addressed as conditions of any approval of the board. The soil borries are taken in October. Typically, the DEP requires soil boring determination of seasonal high water table to be done during the months of January to April. So there could be an effect there, although October 2018 was a very wet time and it's probably not a bad indication of water table because that was a wet year. B, given the fact that soil borries are only 30 feet, bottom line, we want the basement floor elevation to be set a minimum of two feet above the seasonal high water table elevation. In my opinion, you take, if you have two different values on the site, you take the higher one and go two feet from there. So that's what we're saying. Basement's got to come up 7.2 inches. C, notwithstanding requests of bulk variances, additional variances appear to be required for a change of grade elevation of more than two feet and stories above grade. Okay? Change of grade elevation can't be avoided. There appears to be about a 10-foot diameter depression. Maybe a stump rotted years ago or something, but whatever it is, it's small, but it's more than two feet deep. So there's no way to level the site normally. And it's within the building footprint, but it's still a change of grade. So there's no way to level the site normally and not do that. That's the technical issue. It's what is technically required, so they ask for it. The second part about stories above grade, with some minor grading changes to the plan, they can eliminate that and I strongly recommend they do. There's no reason to grant a variance.
We're stipulating to that as you hear through the testimony.
All right, D, all construction details finalized in strict accordance with township requirements and to my satisfaction. E, acceptable stone mortar facility operation and maintenance manual got to be provided. And F, all plot plan and all supporting documents should be revised and finalized in all respects to the satisfaction of planning board engineer. I should have pointed out, I did not actually get a copy of the minor subdivision plat. Having said that, something like this, it makes more sense to file this by deed than it makes to file it by plat anyway, so it's sort of a mood issue.
We can, we did submit everything. I'm not sure how it didn't make it from email.
No problem. I'm just saying you're not going to do much with it anyways.
Right, okay. So we can stipulate to the fact that we're proposing to eliminate the variance as it relates to story above grade. It's just a matter of a few inches at a couple of corners of the house. So that we can stipulate now. I'll have testimony from the engineer and the architect with regard to the basement. We are going to comply. I just want to put on the record how we're proposing to comply. So I'd like to introduce Matthew Dubois. He is a licensed professional engineer in New Jersey. Let's have him sworn.
Do you swear to tell the truth and whole truth? The testimony you're about to give is the truth and whole truth, so you have to...
Yes, I do.
Your name?
It's Matthew Dubois. I'm an engineer from Nelson Engineering right here in Ocean.
And you're licensed as an engineer and a planner?
Yes, I am licensed as both.
Okay, and he's testified numerous times in this board. Before you start and go over to that exhibit, I just want to walk the board through this, through your testimony. You've gone over this. So the first sheet is an aerial with a parcel map overlay from NewJerseyTaxMaps.com. And is that the subject property in red?
Yes, number nine highlighted in red is our subject property.
Okay, and surrounding it, there are almost, it appears that just about every single lot in the area in this visual is less in lot width. So ours is unusually wide as compared to the other lots.
That's correct.
Is that correct? Okay, and then looking at the second sheet, the subject property is, on the left of the sheet is the house, right?
Yes, it is.
And that's looking west down the street and the treat area is the vacant portion of this lot.
Correct.
And then the next one is looking past the vacant area to the rest of the street. And is that generally fully developed with a rhythm of houses on smaller lots?
It is.
And then the next is looking east of the home and again, that shows...
Once again, fully developed lots.
Okay, with a constant rhythm of home after home as opposed to vacant lots in between?
Yes.
And then finally, looking north on Oakwood, which is across, again, what do we see?
Once again, just more homes, no vacant lots.
Okay, so what we have for our lot in that it's double the width of all the other surrounding lots and has this large vacant area, is that consistent or inconsistent with the character of that neighborhood as it exists today?
As the lot currently is, it's inconsistent with the neighborhood.
Let's go to what you moved in as, well, I moved in as A7. And let's talk about what's existing versus what's proposed.
Well, what's existing is the home that we are still showing on the eastern portion of the lot. That's going to be remaining the same. All that we're really doing is striking the line down the middle, cutting it into two different lots so we can build a new two-story frame dwelling on the western portion, the currently wooded area.
Okay, and what we're proposing by way of improvement, everything we're proposing conforms now that we stipulated to the eliminating the above story except for filling in that hole in the center of the lot.
Yeah, we have the existing variance on the eastern lot, which we can't do anything about. And the proposed variance to fill in the hole on the property we're developing.
Okay, but we're not raising the site, we're not regrading the site in any dramatic way. It's basically going to stay the same elevation, just kind of leveling it out where there's some depressions.
It'll be consistent with the other developed homes in the area.
Okay, importantly, there was, Bill pointed out that in your, in the seasonal high water testing, there was a differential between the two areas that we measured. So we're willing to agree to set the basement two feet above the higher one to be ultra-conservative, making sure that we're out of that. And in order to do that, that will necessitate us to do some regrading?
We will have to regrade slightly in order to bring the finished floor and the basement floor up the 7.2 inches.
Okay, and that'll also require us to slightly move the building to the east?
Yeah, I did a tentative grading design based on Bill's comments in order to bring the driveway up to the new garage finished floor. We'll have to shift the building two and a half feet to the east so we can grade back down to the proper one.
Okay, and does that create any new variances, whether it be with regard to the grading or the grading, I'm sorry, the grading of the driveway or stories above grade?
It doesn't.
Create any issue?
None.
Okay, can we comply with everything else in Bill's letter?
Yes, we can.
And you did the tree removal plan and there was a, right now, we're only proposing to plant how many trees on the lot?
I believe four.
Four streets, I'm sorry, not on the lot, on the overall subdivision.
I don't actually remember which were existing that were highlighted for this rendering, which are proposed.
Okay, and the applicant will either make a payment of $9,100 or add additional trees?
Yes, we'll comply.
Okay. And the lots otherwise fully complied but for 400 square feet?
Yes.
Okay, so from A, as we'd indicated, that the current lot is more than two times the existing lot width. You've driven the neighborhood, obviously, and you had a chance to review what I moved in as A6. Is what we're creating typical or within the character of that neighborhood?
It is typical and driving along Pinewood Avenue, you wouldn't be able to tell that it's deficient by those 400 square feet.
And that's because we're actually still over with regards to lot width?
We are, yes.
And we're proposing 96?
That is correct.
So from the street, we're going to appear to even be larger than what the minimum requirement is, is that correct?
Yes, it is.
And the deficiency that we have, the 400 square feet, that amounts to all of about 4%?
I believe, yes.
Okay. If this lot were not to be subdivided, based on the buildable lot area and applying the 27% buildable, I'm sorry, building coverage allowable a homeowner keeping this lot in this configuration could construct approximately a 4,000-square foot footprint of a house, correct?
Yes, they could. Yes, they could.
Which would render it to be about an eight thousand square foot house, and it would be fully conforming?
Yes, it would.
Okay, in your opinion, now switching hats as a planner, would an eight thousand square foot house be more in character or less in character?
That would be less in character with what's been built in this area.
So, is it your opinion that what we're proposing, while we're short four hundred square feet, it's a little bit of, it's a better zoning alternative than leaving it one lot and having it developed as one large house?
Yes, it would be.
Okay, that's all I have, unless there's any questions for Mr. Dubois.
Any questions for Mr. Dubois? I have a question, Mr. Dubois. I don't know if I misheard you. Did you say the existing house has to be moved two feet to the east?
No, the proposed house. Compared to what we showed on the application, if we regrade this to raise the basement floor and also raise the garage floor at the same time in order to meet existing grade at the property line, we need to move the proposed house two and a half feet east.
Okay.
One thing I needed to add, Mr. Verilli, and by raising it, and I think it's all about eight inches, that doesn't affect the building height at all? Would it still conform?
We would still conform with building height.
All right, thank you.
About twenty-nine feet.
Anyone else on the board for Mr. Dubois?
I don't know if it's specific to Mr. Dubois, is about the trees. Can you go over about the trees with me?
Sure.
What's going on with them?
Well, it is Mr. Dubois. Currently, as, I'll defer, if you look at... So, you didn't have that in front of you, Matt, so why don't you come next to me? And let's take a look at your tree removal plan. You identified a...
We're removing twenty-nine trees on our tree preservation plan here.
And you're proposing four that are qualifying, which leaves a deficiency of twenty-five trees.
Yes.
And we're proposing, the applicant isn't quite sure yet whether or not they're gonna plant or they're not, they're going to offer to pay into the tree fund, but they will comply with the ordinance. And we're not claiming credit for any of those trees. We're assuming that they're all healthy trees.
Okay, so, at this point, you're just proposing four. Why don't you propose all of them?
Propose all of what?
All the trees, their full requirement.
We are proposing all the trees.
Okay, so, were you saying only four?
No, 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 we're required to put four shade trees in, which meet your requirement.
That's on the street, isn't that correct?
No, that's actually on our property, I believe.
These are the trees, these are the trees.
Are four trees?
I'm sorry?
They're street trees, but they're counted as four of the required to be planted.
Right, we just still require twenty-five more trees.
Fifteen trees per acre, which would be about seven or eight trees required for that requirement.
And we're proposing four.
You're proposing four, and how many more exist? That's what...
Twenty-five.
No, no, no.
No, 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 the ones that we're not removing, we have one, two, three, four, there's four, five, that are, which we get, that are remaining on the property, plus the four we're planting is nine, so we're meeting the requirement as to fifteen trees per acre.
Yeah, but you're not replacing all of the trees that you're removing. I think that's Dr. Benedetto's question.
Correct, no, that's correct.
I think if they were to replace all of those trees on the site, I think it would be very difficult to do and have the trees grow and be healthy.
I'm not disputing that, but...
You can put more trees on the site, definitely.
You know, when I look at the aerial photo that you showed me, and I look at all the lots in that area, they're all heavily wooded lots. So, I understand you want to do subdivision, which is fine, but I want, you know, I don't want to drive down that road and see like a barren property with no trees on it.
A hundred percent.
Doesn't make any sense.
We agree, and just to point out, if you look at actually the street view, it's not heavily wooded. There's mature trees with large tree canopies. So, it's not that there are a ton of trees. If you look at the different, it's that there are large trees with, with large canopies. We are proposing the four street trees. Certainly, my client, which will grow in and from the street will give the appearance. We can add more trees if the board would like. We'd like to leave some flexibility for the homeowner to landscape it in the way that they want to.
Please, reserve your comment. We will get to that.
Yeah, so, again, I just think that you should propose more trees. I understand you want to pay into the shade tree commission, and I understand that, but I would like to propose more trees.
Okay, well...
So, either on the property line in between the two buildings or on the back perimeter, you can propose trees without affecting the flexibility of the landscaping.
We can, and we can agree to that, and I would point out, I know that it's not part of the record yet, but there was an objection with regard to the removal of the trees. If we weren't in here for a subdivision, and we made the application, because we wanted to put in a pool, for example, and it was fully conforming, and we wanted to put in a pool house, we would be able to remove all of those trees, not be required to put in the shade trees, and also be able to fully pay in. So, the board is in a unique situation here. Because we need a variance, you're in a position to say, hey, okay, you can't do whatever you want. Now, we can impose something. So, I understand that, and I can speak to my client. I don't know what an appropriate number would be, what the board would find acceptable. I'd ask for you to throw out...
Well, I don't think we know this lot enough. I mean, Jim, when you look at the lot, what do you think the tree, what do you think the capacity of that is reasonable?
Can you show me on that drawing where the four proposed trees will be?
Yeah, I'm sorry, but before we go there, do we have copies of the plans that reflect that structure? Because I don't have that. That would help.
I don't know why, because you are then a professional sitting together, but let me give you mine.
That would be helpful, thank you.
For the time being.
And one confusing thing with this, on the tree removal plan, any tree that was going to remain is shown very small, and they're shown much larger on the color rendering.
Just for the record, the first sheet shows the existing dwelling, the proposed dwelling, small pool and patio. And if you go to... I'm sorry. The last sheet shows the existing trees that qualify, that are proposed to be removed, and then, the proposed trees on the existing lot that are to remain. And if you look at the existing lot, and we talk about the, you know, neighbor looking, there are one, two, three, four, five qualifying trees on the existing. So, what I'd suggest is to have it mirror the existing. We could agree to plant an additional five qualifying trees on the proposed lot, kind of around the perimeter like you suggested, Dr. Benedetto. And then, at least, it will be consistent with what's on the existing maintained house.
So, just to review, there are required by our ordinance to have four trees, street trees, per lot, correct?
Not per lot, for the whole stuff that we're...
No, 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 for the entire, our...
So, two, two per lot? Okay, so, on that rendering, what is existing and what are you proposing?
The four that we're proposing are the northeasternmost corner, immediately to the left of that one, and then, the two on the eastern side, on the western side of the new property line.
All right, so, it's, I could argue that there are no new trees planted on the new subdivision.
New lot, I mean.
On the new lot, because, I could argue that, because it's right on the property line. I'm just saying, I'm just saying. I could argue that. So, from my standpoint, I'd like to, more trees on the street side of the new proposal.
That becomes a problem because of the storm.
Yeah.
Okay, so, can we put, are they able to put one?
I think you're misinterpreting ordinance.
Yeah, I think they could probably sneak one with a deep root.
He's not misinterpreting, and I know exactly what he's saying.
No, no, he's saying you have to put four new street trees in.
No, he's not. What he's saying is he wants to see the frontage filled in with more trees, regardless of what the ordinance says, if I'm interpreting that correctly.
Yeah, well, yeah. Make it a hair deeper and shift it a little bit to the east, I guess, the right.
You can go this way, and we can just move this tree here.
We could move the bed in a direction.
You can sneak one with a taproot in between the bed and the driveway.
Oh, here.
Yeah, yeah, and that would kind of do what I think the doctor's looking to do, make the street skate kind of a jump.
And then, you would also be able to put trees on the back perimeter?
Correct, we'd agree that we would add, so we would have five additional trees on the property that are qualifying, so it would be consistent with the house next door.
So, that would give you, so you're gonna put four plus five, so nine.
Nine, correct. But also, I don't know that we're gonna do it on the back perimeter. If they decide to put it along the side or in the backyard, I don't want to dictate that it's gonna be on the perimeter.
Yeah, I have to agree with the doctor. I feel that, you know, having the trees there looking at the pictures of the development, it would make sense to fit in with that neighborhood. And I also understand too, that every one of us in the town that has a house, condo, apartment, wherever you live in the town, they had to knock down trees to build our homes. So, I understand that too, but I would like to maintain that look within this neighborhood, because those pictures you gave were, you know, I don't want it to stand out.
And we agree, I mean, it's gonna make it more appealable to sell to somebody one day, so we don't disagree. So, we're happy to add, move the street trees, so there's another one along the front, and then, add five more qualifying trees in the property. And then, whatever the balance is, based on the calculation, we'll pay that into the tree fund.
Anyone else?
Anyone else have a question for this witness?
Ed?
Well, yeah, and a question for the witness and for Bill. Can you just briefly describe where and what the stormwater management is?
For stormwater management, we have some arch pipes, the StormTech brand. They're running right in front of the house and in front of the paver walkway, and we're collecting the roof drains and part of the patio, and directing that into essentially half-pipe with stone underneath.
And where is it discharging, directly into the storm drain?
It discharges directly underground.
Any other questions from board members? I'd like to open this up to general public if they would like to ask any questions of Mr. Dubois regarding his testimony.
Matt, why don't you have a seat, Matt, so you can answer on the mic and...
Hi, Julie Miller, 157 Whale Pond Road in Oakhurst. This is my neighborhood. My question is, the trees that you're planning to remove, are they the big trees?
It's actually most of the trees on that property, in order to fit the house right there in the middle.
Well, I don't know how to read this.
We can stipulate that, yes, they are the big trees.
See, that's the problem.
The biggest, the biggest tree on the lot is being preserved. There's a forty-inch poplar that's being preserved.
See, this is my neighborhood, and this is what's happening. All these trees are going, and they're gonna replace it with a small tree. So, that doesn't do anything for the neighborhood as far as the flooding, which is really big on Whale Pond. And...
At least a half a mile from Whale Pond.
Yeah, but the whole area.
Mr. Verilli, I believe this is questions only right now?
Just question of witness regarding his testimony.
Well, why do they have to remove that many trees?
We have to remove those trees to actually be able to build on this particular lot.
I just don't remember that many trees being removed before all this building went on. That's my comment.
Okay.
And I appreciate the questions with the trees, because that's what's happening here.
That's okay.
Part of the loss of trees is actually to accommodate the stormwater management system, which is a relatively new requirement, and that's actually going to help, you know, mitigate any potential flooding issues. We're taking all the water that would normally run off and into Pinewood Avenue, and we're putting it underground.
Can't replace the roots of a large tree.
I'm gonna have to ask you to just comment, I mean, just to ask him questions regarding his testimony.
That's all I have to say.
All right, thank you very much. Anyone else from the general public? No, then we'll end that part of the session and...
I'd just like to call up the architect quickly to go over the proposed house.
Hi, I'm John Gutierrez, the architect of the project.
Could raise your right hand?
Raise your right hand. Where the testimony you're about to give is the truth and the whole truth, so help you God?
Yes.
Thank you.
John, you're a licensed architect of the state of New Jersey?
Yes.
And you've been accepted as an expert before in front of planning and zoning boards?
Yes, I have.
So, not to, not to reiterate the same thing, so, do we have plans?
Yes, you do, sir.
So, we have these?
Yes, those are the plans.
Okay.
Correct. Okay, John, with regard to the plans, we're proposing a conforming two-and-a-half-story single-family home with a single-car garage, correct?
Right, right.
Okay, and you heard that there was testimony with regard to changing the grade to eliminate the minor variances that relates to stories above grade? That won't affect the integrity of the architecture?
No.
Okay, and we talked about moving the house a few feet to the east and changing the grading, and that would necessitate the relocation of the side door, and I believe it's the right side door, is that correct?
It should be the one by the garage on the way.
All right, let's take it. Yes, because there is no door on the left side. So, that's the right side door, so we would need to relocate that just for purposes of regrading, but again, that will have no impact?
No, no, no.
Okay, and raising the grade, when we raise it to allow for the, for the basement to be raised, the height will be well under the thirty-five-foot building height?
Absolutely, yeah.
Any questions for the architect?
How deep is the basement?
It's from the bottom of the joists to the slabs, eight feet, eight inches. That would allow for any tough work in the event they want to finish it later and have an eight-foot ceiling.
Yes, it's close.
How are some of the other homes on that block, looking at your drawings? How tall is the house that you proposed?
It's a... It's about, I think that it's about twenty-nine, thirty feet, right?
Thirty feet at max.
Not being, not having to be exact. The houses that I'm looking at in these pictures, they seem very tall. I mean, is this gonna stand out like a sore thumb?
I don't, I don't think so myself, I mean...
I can tell you that as you look at the pictures, there's a lot of capes with dormers on the top and that are raised capes, that, so, some of them are smaller. I can guarantee you over the next several years, knowing the growing trend, that a lot of these likely will be expanded. But it is entirely within the ordinance requirements with regard to everything, and certainly, it's far more conforming than a larger house on a giant lot.
I'm sorry, Jennifer, what did you say the height was?
About thirty feet, I believe. I think that's, Matt, will you speculate it? So, twenty-nine feet, and that might go up to about thirty feet when they add the eight inches.
I gotta be careful with that, because you can't go and figure about grades.
No.
So, as far as color schemes and all that stuff, you feel it blends in nicely with the neighborhood?
I think so.
Okay.
I saw we discussed that at length, beginning at the project, so...
Right, so, we're proposing the Cedar Impressions, and some of the upgraded architectural features will actually enhance the neighborhood, in your opinion?
We were very conscious of it, of make sure that it fit. Do you want it to be all the scale, like a home, what happens? Try to blend in with the neighborhood.
Now, does the developer own the other property too? Are they planning on changing that house? The original house gonna stay?
I don't, the original house is proposed to stay. Whether or not it's gonna be upgraded, I'm not sure. But the original house is proposed to stay.
Mr. Gutierrez?
Yes.
What color is the house gonna be? The color? Okay, something like that, okay, that's...
It's not gonna be flamingo pink.
Right, okay.
Really, come on.
It's gonna be some kind of traditional earth tone or white.
I know the neighborhood very well. I live very close to it.
You can't...
Okay, just as long as... Anyone else on the board have a question?
So, so you're just proposing building a one house? The other existing, the other house is staying existing? Thank you.
Anyone else? I'd like to open this up to the general public if they have any questions of the architect regarding his testimony. No? Well, thank you, Mr. Gutierrez. Is that your case?
That's my case, Mr. Chair.
So, does anyone in the general public have any general comments on this particular application? I invite you to step up to the microphone and be sworn in and give your comments. I invite you to step up to the microphone and be sworn in and give your comments. I guess not, okay, we can proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and we would just ask that the board vote favorably with the stipulation that we comply with Bill's letter. And we revise the plans to show, uh, one of the shade trees moved over to the new lot, so the front is more uniform. And add five more qualifying trees elsewhere on the property.
Um. That's not what, what you said you were gonna do. You said you were gonna add nine more, so that would actually be eight more.
Oh, four plus five, nine.
Nine, but you're moving one of them.
It's part of the four.
Part of the four.
Yeah.
Okay.
You said instead of on the line.
Instead of stacking them on the line, there.
Okay.
Yep.
I would never.
But, but Jim, but Jim, hey, Jim, Jim, is that the reasonable, is that, is that the capacity that we could have for that, for that lot?
I think it's consistent with what's there now, uh, on the other lot, on the remaining, that lot with the remaining house. And I think quite frankly, a homeowner is probably gonna come in and put more trees in, it's very likely. But, I, you know, quite frankly, the way the ordinance is structured, you can't even require the five trees, but they're, they're doing it because there was a variance requested. I think any more, the kid wind up having an overgrown lot, and if anybody wants to see one that's overgrown, come and look at my house.
Okay.
Jim, just, just real quick, though, the, the report you had doesn't, wasn't of this latest rendering, correct?
No, it wasn't.
Alright.
We don't pick the rendering.
It was, but he didn't see it.
I didn't see.
It was submitted, he just didn't get it.
Yeah. Yeah, the written report wasn't of this, this rendering. I had the subdivision plaque.
He only saw the subdivision plaque, he never saw the plan for the building.
Yeah. Okay, but my comments to the board tonight were based on this plan.
Okay.
Uh, so John, just a, just a quick question, so one of the things that we've all been, you know, in past applicants are always worried about how this fits into the current landscape of the community, although there was some, you know, testimony and some things that felt like a little nebulous, is there any way to lock down any of that, or should we, you know?
What in particular could you have?
Uh, you know, uh, gray, white, whatever, who knows, uh, you know, there was some nebulous questions, I, I.
No, no, no.
I understand what you might say.
No, 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 it's not what I might say, just if you guys had standards, it would be very easy.
Yeah.
There's no, there is no architectural analysis of the neighborhood, so there's no way to, to put parameters, so I, I wouldn't even know how you could do it and have it.
Well, I guess we could get him to swear to something. I mean, I'm just, I'm just, you know, I, I mean, the one thing I, the one thing I feel good about is that there's not people from the community here saying that they're objecting about there being a house, they're more objecting about the trees.
I, I think the concern is what happens when a homeowner goes in there, let's say we agree we'll make it a white house, and they want to change the siding. Are you gonna limit the person who purchases the house five years from now from the color to me?
I guess the only thing we want to worry about is one thing we can worry about at a time, so.
Oh, I understand.
So let's, I just, let's worry about the one thing we have at a time.
I, we can certainly stipulate as a condition that it will be a traditional color in the realm of earth tones.
Beautiful.
Whites, blacks, tans, grays.
Perfect, at least for me, perfect.
Maybe not black.
No.
Won't be black, but maybe trim only, but you know what I'm saying.
Yeah, I understand, great.
It would be earth tones, it would be traditional.
Great, something, right.
Tonight's the neighborhood.
Correct.
Right.
Okay, very good. Well, uh, would someone want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to, uh, accept the, uh, applicant. Approve that.
Motion to approve. I second.
Hey, thanks.
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Tefillias?
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Siena?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Thank you very much.
Want to?
I grew up in, I live very. The kids that I, year older than me used to play.
Still no approval.
They don't, they won't.
Green, that's it. Nick, you're gonna come to Jet Properties.
Jet Properties.
Okay. Uh, number seven on the list is Jet Properties Two LLC, Block Four, Lot Four Point Zero One. And Four Point Zero Two, Forty-two Whale Pond Road, Ocean, Zone R Four. Attorney for the applicant is Barryus Crane Square.
Barry, no, Barry's not here, I don't believe.
But you'd sent him an email today, is that correct?
Right, that is, the client did have to come, we never said anything about him.
I believe that the email stated that he felt that he did not have to be here.
His client, I said.
Is anybody here?
Look, I don't have my, I don't have my computer running.
Is there anyone here for number seven, Jet Properties LLC?
You could, you could act on it, correct?
Yes, because all, all we're doing, what it is, it's.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I said no need for the client to come, I, I don't know that he did ever send, I mean, I, I wasn't involved, but.
But we, I believe we could move forward.
We can move forward on this, cause all of this, we have, uh, this is, uh, a proposal, the board had granted a subdivision on this, and, um, Mr. Fitzgerald can explain, I think, it, it a little more precisely, but anyways, there was trouble getting the survey, a correct survey done, because the historical surveys did not match. And, and as part of this, they, they had to submit a deed or file a deed, but because the historical surveys on the property did not match, it allowed for right-of-way, right? Um, it took a long time, and they're out of time, so all you're really doing here is extending the time for them to file their deed and get started. That's, is that right?
That's the bottom line of it, it's actually approving a, a, a new subdivision, reapproving a previously approved subdivision.
Reapproving the resolution that you already approved, just giving new dates now, because it was impossible to do before.
I recall this, uh, application, this is the one on Whale Pond Road, it's a double lot, where the, very wooded.
It is. Correct. Yep.
And, um, he, he agreed to plant, um, a lot of holly trees in my request, sixteen holly trees and.
Yes, he did.
You had something to say about the trees?
Somebody has to stand up for the trees, I'm sorry.
Yes.
The trees can't talk for themselves.
That's right. Just leave me alone, right?
That, that's exactly the application.
So, so we're not approving, all we're approving is the right to have a, the right.
There was a right-of-way dedication requested and agreed to, but. No, you're, you're approving the, you're just giving him more time to, an extension of time to get what he had to do done. Because it took so long to get the survey, because none of the historical surveys matched.
Oh, I'll make a motion to extend the time that he has to do what he has to do.
I'll, I'll recast.
Pardon me?
Motion to approve.
Move to reapprove the application with new deadlines.
I'll make a motion to reapprove the application with new deadlines.
I second.
Roll call.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Alright.
Alright.
Hold on. No, sir. Make a motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn, please.
Uh, I'll second.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.